Welcome to the April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly here after scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Saying none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel Eight and Ten Seventy-two, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First action is to establish quorum. Select Board Member De Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metter is present. We are all here. All right. First action, minutes, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Edit submissions. Mike.
Yeah, I have just one other than the typos that I gave Kathy. Page four in the, at the top of the page, the carryover paragraph that begins with Didi Holt. Before the last sentence, which is the next to the last line where it says Ms. Holt, I'd like to insert a sentence before that to read as follows. He also requested that all letters submitted up to the meeting time be recorded in the meeting record.
Again. Additional edit.
Dean. I just have one. It's on page eight, under item B, second, well, it's the first sentence. Gil Sparks, his title currently is co-director of the working group. I guess that will change going forward to when, now that it's a committee. But that's the title, that's the title they've been using. He and Liz McCarty are co-directors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Public announcements and agenda item requests. I'll start with the board. Does the board have any public announcements or agenda item requests? I'm just gonna make one. Usually I give a whole list of board openings for the board committee openings that I want to solicit to, but reflecting back on our meeting last week where we had the Chair of the Economic Development Committee before us, and the acknowledgement that we're going to look at the current membership and find out who is still willing to keep moving forward on the, on the committee, we do have a couple openings on that committee. So I just wanted to kind of do a shine on that one particular committee, Economic Development Committee, one of our town committees. So if anyone is willing to step forward and serve, or if you know of anyone who you want to prod a little bit, to step forward and be willing to serve on behalf of the towns, of the town, we welcome all applicants. So I just want to give a little push because without our recruitment and public recruitment, you know, we will, we have harder times finding participants to fill these seats, and there's certainly a vast variety of qualified individuals that are in our community that I would very much welcome to have, to step forward and, and serve, so.
Corey.
Yes.
Just a question related to that. Do we have an agenda item request from any of us about discussing the Economic Development Committee?
Yes.
I, I think we tried to do that during our committee review back in, and it sort of fell apart.
We need to circle back for specific topics.
Yeah. And whether we should have a redirection of its, of its purpose.
Correct. I think the, the Chair gave the, the kind of the report, acknowledged kind of where members stood, members, we had a couple openings in the committee. I think we need to, on their end, recruit, and our end, kind of refocus and figure out what direction is. So yes, you are absolutely correct.
Thank you.
All right. Public announcements and agenda item requests. I know from Ms. Judy Giorgio has one online. Judith?
Hi, hi, thank you, Chairman. Just a quick announcement to remind you and your, your viewers about the Twelfth Annual Chatham Recycles Book and Media Swap. It's going to be April twenty-seventh, so it's coming up, not this weekend, but the following weekend, from nine to two at the Chatham Annex downstairs, same place we've been having it for the last several years. And we will begin collecting people's books and media items on Monday, April twenty-second. We're looking for books, CDs, DVDs, VHS tapes, cassette tapes, vinyl records, and puzzles. So yeah, that's, that's all, and we welcome, everyone's welcome, and it's a free event. People can come and take as much as they want, and it's usually very popular, so we're looking forward to it.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight with a public announcement or agenda item request? Is there anyone online with a public announcement or agenda item request?
Nope.
See any hands? All right. We'll move to our first of two public hearings. First public hearing is to consider change of manager for annual all alcohol beverage licenses for TJP Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Pates Restaurant from James Edwards to Scott Smith. I'll ask the clerk to read the public notice, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five thirty PM, in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex Two Sixty-One, George Rider Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform, to consider a request for a change of manager from James Edwards to Scott Smith on the annual all alcoholic beverages restaurant license for TPJ Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Pates Restaurant, twelve sixty Main Street. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Thank you very much. And who is presenting? Yes, sir. Would you actually step up to the podium there?
Sure.
Yep, either one, take a moment, introduce yourself and.
Okay. I am Scott Smith, so I'll be taking over the management of Pates Restaurant. I've got probably thirty-some years in restaurants and hospitality, most recently at Katanzin in Marion, Mass., a private golf club, and I started with Pates about three weeks ago, so.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
So I will move the approval of the change.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, all those in favor, Select, oh, I am sorry.
Oh.
Public hearing.
I am so worked up on trying to close that public hearing. So it is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public in-house tonight would like to make a comment? I'm a mind reader tonight. No. Is there anyone online who wouldn't like to make a public comment on this agenda tonight? No. All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
No, 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 we're skipping all that.
Oh, we're skipping.
Oh, okay.
We're just gonna go right to the motion and.
All right, the, we have a motion on the table.
We have a second on the table. All right. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck, Eric.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next public hearing is Consider Change of Manager for Seasonal All Alcohol Beverages License for TJP Chatham Group LLC, doing business as The Chatham Cut, from Lauren Underwood to Matthew W. Cog.
Keo.
Co-Keo.
Yo.
If the clerk would read the second public hearing notice, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five thirty PM, in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex Two Sixty-One, George Rider Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform, to consider a request for a change of manager from Lauren Underwood to Matthew W. Keo, on the seasonal all alcoholic beverages restaurant license for TPJ Restaurant Group, doing business as The Chatham Cut, twelve hundred Main Street. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Thank you very much. And who is presenting tonight? Yes, sir. Would you want to step up to the podium, please? Good evening.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name's Matthew Keo. I've been also like Scott Smith, I've been in hospitality for the better part of my career. I'm fifty, I've been on the Cape since I was twenty-five, and then restaurant manager the entire time. I ran the front of the house for The Red Pheasant, which is an old place that some of you might recognize me from. And I also came from private clubs as well. I was at Oyster Harbor Club for a number of years before I joined last year, The Chatham Cut, and, and I'm very happy to be working with the organization, and we're doing great things in the town of Chatham, and it's been a great joy. Last season, I look forward to further developing The Chatham Cut as a member of the community.
Great, thank you very much. Well, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience tonight with a question or comment? Is there anyone online with a question or comment? No, see any?
No.
To the board, question or comment from the board?
Move approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments on our business agenda. Our business agenda this evening, I'm just gonna quickly run down. Item A, Arbor Day Proclamation, Chatham Friends, Chatham Friends of Trees. Item B, Considered Use of Town Property, Earth Day Tree Sapling Giveaway, Chatham Friends of Trees. Item C, Consider Special One-Day Alcohol Permit for Wine and Malt Liquor Only for Cape Associates Incorporated at seven eight four Main Street on May second, two thousand and twenty-four, from three thirty PM to five thirty PM. Item D, Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest Request for Exemption Determination, Barry Greco, Selfish Advisor Committee, and we're gonna make a quick edits because the second portion was Jamie Bassett, Selfish Advisor Committee, upon Mr. Bassett's request. That action or review has been withdrawn. He has subsequently issued his resignation to the Selfish Advisory Committee for the record, so we will not act on the second part of that. Item E, Status Update for Ninety Bridge Street. And item F, Consider Request for Additional Pavement Marking and Signage to Facilitate Mobile Food Vending Town Office Parking Lot. So with that being said, is there anyone from the public, any public on the agenda items side, public comments on the agenda item? Anyone in-house? Anyone online?
No.
All right, so be it. Business Agenda Item A, Arbor Day Proclamation, Chatham Friends of Trees.
Good evening, Dan Young, Chatham's Friends of Trees. So let's talk trees. By proclamation, Arbor Day will be April twenty-sixth, which is Chatham's thirteenth. This is significant as Chatham has a Tree City USA designation. Since our last Arbor Day, Chatham has lost many trees due to construction, development, disease, and storms. So where does Chatham go from here? J. Sterling Morton, who originally proposed Arbor Day, said, "Other holidays repose upon the past. Arbor Day proposes for the future." So let's do exactly this. Planting a tree can improve air quality, prevent soil erosion, minimize stormwater runoff, provide food, enhance property values and aesthetics, provide wildlife cover, or creates a habitat for insects, which ultimately benefit our songbird population. So tonight, Friends of Trees announces a tree planting effort here in Chatham. This will be more than mitigation of removed trees. Its goal is ultimately to increase Chatham's urban tree canopy and understory with native trees and shrubs. This will be a multi-year project, and more details to follow, but tonight's proclamation is a first step. So let's celebrate Arbor Day, and as advocated by J. Sterling Morton, look toward the future, and let's plant trees. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Would, unless there's no questions or comments, could someone like to read the proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be appropriate if the clerk were to read it.
Oh, thank.
Can you take a vote?
No, I think that I'm very, I'm so pleased that.
I'll move that we adopt it after the clerk so eloquently reads this.
It'd be my pleasure. Select Board Member Nick Castro. Two thousand and twenty-four Arbor Day Proclamation for the town of Chatham, Mass., whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday, called Arbor Day, was first celebrated with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce soil erosion caused by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide wildlife habitat, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal wherever they are planted. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Chatham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Arbor Day in the town of Chatham, Massachusetts. And further, we urge all citizens to celebrate Chatham's Arbor Day on April twenty-sixth by planting a tree, sitting beneath one, or taking a walk in the woods, or in one of Chatham's beautiful parks, appreciating trees for all they do for us, our town, and our planet. Dated the sixteenth day of April in the year two thousand and twenty-four, sign the select board.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Next, Considered Use of Town Property, Earth Day Tree Sapling Giveaway, Chatham Friends of Trees.
Let's talk more trees. Annually, what Friends of Trees has done is given out free small little oak saplings, and this year is no exception. What we will be giving out is oak saplings and also another variety called tulip tree, and they're faster growing than an oak, but little variety, they are a native, it's a very good, very good tree. But so on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, we'd like to conduct our giveaway along Main Street in front of Town Hall, and specifically, it would be between the entrance on Main Street and the parking lot. And there's no setup required, requested. Friends of Trees will do our own. We have a table which the size is two and a half feet wide by six feet long by two and a half feet high, and we will remove that. There's gonna be no garbage, no litter, nothing. And, and it will also be from ten to one on Saturday, so that's the timeframe.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
I move to approve the use of town property for Friends of Trees to distribute free tree saplings in honor of Arbor Day, two thousand and twenty-four.
A second?
Second.
Okay, further, actually, just confirmation, the area is all, we're all in agreement with the area?
We are, and just confirming, it's not at the community center.
Correct.
It'll be at the town offices by.
Correct.
Good, wonderful, all right.
Yeah, the Friday giveaway is at the community center. The Saturday is Town Hall.
Okay. Motion, we have a second question.
Just, do you have a sense of how many you're gonna give away, or you would hope to give away?
We are hoping a hundred twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck.
Thank you. And just as a side note, if anyone would like more details on the Arbor Day, Earth Day events, they're all on the website of the Chatham Conservation Foundation, a lot more details there, and some of the items do, some of the events do require registration because of capacity constraints, but thank you very much for your support.
Right, thank you. All right. Item C, Consider Special One-Day Alcohol Permit for Wine and Malt Liquor Only for Cape Associates Incorporated at seven eighty-four Main Street on May second, two thousand and twenty-four, from three thirty PM to five thirty PM.
That's correct. I'm online.
Yes.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? I'm Kate LaRue, I'm from Cape Associates. We're gonna be having a ribbing cutting ceremony for our new office at seven eighty-four Main Street on Thursday, May second. It's, like I said before, three thirty to five thirty, and we're looking for a one-day license for that. We do have a contract with a bartender, so we have secured that, and the plan is, I believe, we're gonna have between sixty and seventy-five people there. We're still collecting responses on that, but looking forward to the event, and we also have included it in the chamber newsletter as well.
Great, thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board? Dean.
I just had a question. Thank you. So is this invitation only, or is it open to the public?
No others, it's open to the public, certainly, yeah.
All right, thank you. I move approval.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck with the ribbon cutting.
Thank you.
Item D, Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest Request for Exemption Determination. We are solely acting on Barry Greco, Selfish Advisor Committee this evening. Is Mr. Greco online? Barry, are you online? I don't see. He is not in the audience. What is the board's?
I think the last meeting, when Mr. Bassett couldn't attend, we postponed the item for consideration, and I think in keeping with, you know, what we did last week, we probably should do the, the same thing and reach out to Mr. Greco to see if he's still interested in getting that determination, or whether he has resolved this issue on his own.
For consistency, I, I agree. Dean?
I'm a supporter of that. I would acknowledge that, or remind us that the upcoming matter that the committee is, the Selfish Advisor Committee is going to take up is at their April twenty-fourth meeting, so we'd be meeting next week, two days before.
Correct, so there, there is still time.
There is, and the, the second point I would want to make, and I don't want to go into an evaluation of his particular application, but we did get a second opinion from Mr. Costello, which has been made available to the board, and I requested today that it be posted and made public.
And I'm fine with that.
Which, which deals with what the town could do to provide some, albeit, I think, very limited measure of protection under the Conflict of Interest laws pursuant to an exemption that's allowable under the, under the State Ethics Commission's regulations, and we might want to consider advancing that for a town consideration at some point, or in the form of an order adopted by the, the Select Board. But I just throw that out because I think we're likely to be discussing that. I know I would want to discuss that when we take up this application.
Agreed. I, I, I mean, basically, not just one individual, we have a lot of, we have a much broader discussion to, to have, so we will reach out to Barry and find out if he's available for next Tuesday, I guess. All right. Item E, Status Update for Ninety Bridge Street.
Green Furman, Director of Financial Resources. If you would give me just one second while I load up the PowerPoint. There we go. So this will be a, a follow-up conversation from our, our meeting earlier this month, taking a trip down memory lane, if you will, along Ninety Bridge Street. So I went back from two thousand and sixteen, reviewing various minutes from our committees and Select Board. This was the first image that I was able to find in two thousand and seventeen. This was called a conceptual plan. You can see that the, I, I believe it was called a commercial dock at the time, down in that lower left-hand area, was approximately sixty feet long. It was a concrete drivable area that, you know, fully serviced, commercial, perhaps some recreational, but primarily designed as a commercial dock. The building that was going to house the upweller is kind of parallel with Bridge Street there, and that was done intentionally and able to provide easier access to the commercial dock and navigation within the area between those two structures along the shoreline. So on November twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, the Select Board remanded this plan, kind of back to the drawing board, and in two thousand and seventeen, this was termed a consensus plan, consistent with the master plan. This is the one that was endorsed by the Select Board in two thousand and nineteen, and I'm happy to go back and forth between the images if it helps, but basically, the, the upweller building is now more perpendicular, as we're not taking into account as much commercial traffic in between the structures, and also that sixty-foot-long commercial structure is now a much more modest twelve-foot extension, and then a gangway and float system that's really designed for recreational and commercial use. This could be used for stepping sailboat masts, short-term, you know, dockage, and really, this is activity that's already happening at Old Mill Boatyard, so hopefully this will allow some of that traffic over in this area and free up some space over on the other side of the harbor. So this is the two thousand and nineteen plan that was endorsed by the Select Board at the time. Here is the two thousand and twenty-one plan, the thirty-five percent design. This is also back when the Select Board approved bringing the boathouse as the structure that would be used for the upweller. So I, I will go back and forth just a little bit, and, you know, from cartoon to site plan, there really hasn't been any alteration of footprint or overall design between that two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty-one plan. Our most recent plan is the ninety percent design, and again, this maintains the same footprint, the same overall concept as the two thousand and nineteen. I think one float was removed over by the upweller just for ease of access, but there certainly hasn't been any, you know, creep of footprint or overall expansion of other uses. Ever since that commercial activity got reduced in twenty-seen, two thousand and seventeen, it wasn't added back in. And then as part of the, you know, overall larger how costs change over time, this is similar to a presentation I gave to FinCom, but I just wanted to kind of step through the various years since when this property was first really imagined. So in the original waterfront bond, two million ninety thousand was, you know, designed in that bond for Ninety Bridge Street. That did not account for the original acquisition price and feasibility study that was about a million dollars by itself. So really, when I provide these, you know, total cost numbers, it includes that. So really, when I provide these, you know, total cost numbers, it includes that original property acquisition. So when we talk about, you know, we, it was going to be about two million, it was still going to be about three million even back then. Um, back during this phase, and if you look at the design stage, there really was no design at that point. We didn't have a bulkhead accounted for. We really, uh, didn't have any piers and floats. This may have just been using the land at the time. So at 2018 was the conceptual design that you saw. This is the one that was remanded and revised. Uh, but at this point, we do have a ten percent contingency and the bulkhead somewhat accounted for as a ballpark of a million dollars added in there. By 2019, we're at a consensus plan. This is the plan that we've been using consistently since 2019. The price, uh, does change slightly over time as things get accounted for, but also as outside funds are accounted for. So the overall price hasn't changed that much. By 2021, this is our thirty-five percent design phase, uh, contingency has increased to twenty percent because, uh, even as we're designing it and we're more sure of what it's going to look like, prices varied significantly. So contingency had to go up to account for that. Additionally, bulkhead prices went up. And then that blue area over on the right side of the graph, uh, that's not saying that these weren't accounted for, but these are our best numbers for three discrete aspects of the overall project. And I just put that on there as an example of how prices change between 2021 and 2024. It's not that, you know, we're designing a different type of upweller pier, but the overall cost between those two design phases pretty much doubled at that point. Um, the dredging is significantly more, the flupsies are more. Um, we have a slightly higher contingency, but this is where these numbers came from. It's not just our project. Projects all around the Cape and Massachusetts have increased significantly during this time. Uh, we do have examples. Ted's been in touch with, our coastal resource director's been in touch with various folks around the region about the increasing prices. Uh, we do have our Harbor Master and our coastal resource director here to provide background on either of those aspects. And then the last slide here is, um, this is just updated, uh, from our April 2002. So moving forward, I'm assuming the Select Board would like, you know, periodic updates of Ninety Bridge and these other waterfront projects, uh, that are associated with the waterfront bond bill. We'll be talking about, you know, what's changed since last time you've seen the prices. So we actually had a reduction in the overall construction costs from the estimated in the bulkhead, and that updates our total costs and our total town funds. So it's, you know, our total cost is still the eleven point one million, the town funds of which are estimated to be eight point eight. And as these change over time, and as much as we get RFPs coming in, uh, and we start awarding contracts, these prices will get refined as we go along. In addition to these quarterly, or more often, updates as desired, uh, we're going to start updating our town projects webpage. Um, the last update was just over four years ago for the Ninety Bridge project, and we will be updating those and others, uh, moving forward. So obviously, we don't want anyone surprised as the numbers change. Um, but that's it for the presentation. I'm available for questions, and we do have our coastal resources and Harbor Master available.
Well, Greg, thank you very much. Um, and the answer to the periodical, um, updates would be yes, please. We would greatly appreciate that, and so would the public. So, uh, questions from the board? Jeff?
Thank you, Corey, and thank you, Greg, for that, uh, um, that summary. And, and you, you assuaged my concerns that, last time we discussed this, I had concerns that we hadn't downsized the commercial aspects of the project. And I know that that was an issue, again, I guess, back in seventeen, and then we did remand the project back. I do remember that now, that, that you pointed out. And, you know, I think the design of the project is, is really cool, and I, I think it's going to be a great project. It is an expensive one. Um, I just want to, I want to point out that, um, we're getting support of about two point three million dollars. And, and I would anticipate or suspect that, or expect that we'll continue to pursue outside funding for this project because it is an extremely unique project. This is, this is supporting a, 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 a neat economic development that we have in town, our, our, our fishery, our Cohog fishery, and our, hopefully, at some point, our scallop fishery, oyster fishery. So I, I think it's a really cool project, um, and one I think ultimately we'll, we'll be very proud of. It's no surprise that these costs have gone up over the last seven years, if so. I mean, we're, we're seven years into this now. If you start, look, it started in seventeen. So, I mean, you know, it's a long time to be, to be mucking about with a project. But anyway, I really do appreciate your approach. I appreciate your, your pointing the, the difference out to us. And I like the way you account for it. I like the way it's presented. So I appreciate the work. Thanks.
Trey?
Uh, thanks, Greg, because I was the other person that was requesting the information, and I appreciate you clarifying all that for us. And rest assured, that we're very supportive of the project going forward. Um, the upweller, as, as Jeff had said, and that whole project is really unique. I think there's a value here that's outstanding in the idea that we have an educational component. It's going to provide propagation opportunities for our wild shell fisheries, which is, we have the highest landing wild shell fishery in the state of Massachusetts when it comes to Cohogs. So I think that that's a really standout, um, uh, piece for us. Um, I, I'm really excited to see the project, and I appreciate the, the time you spent on making the presentation for us.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Greg. Um, I was on the finance committee when this first, when we first acquired the property. And the emphasis of the finance committee and the Select Board at the time was that this would be a mixed use, and, and that drove the reduction in the commercial side, as has been suggested. So I'm, I'm very happy with the design that's, um, underway and very supportive of the project. I just really had one question because, um, the, on the, maybe you could go to the prior slide with the numbers. So the total cost column down at the bottom, 2024, eleven point one forty. How does that relate, if anything, if, if in any way, to the eleven point four million dollar waterfront infrastructure bond issue? Is that, it's for the benefit of the public. I think I have some idea of it, but if you could elaborate on that, it'd be appreciative.
Right, it, it, exactly. It is a very similar number. And a portion of this money is planned to be used for the waterfront bond, uh, but it is mostly coincidence, those two numbers being the same. Um, it's, it's not this entire project that's being used for the new waterfront bond. Um, I have to pull up the exact number, and I don't want to say the...
But just, just in generically, in the fourth column, town funds, some of those funds would come from the waterfront bond? The eight-eight.
I'm sorry, the 2018, did you say?
The eight-eight.
Eight point eight million.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So yes, some of those will be coming from the existing waterfront bond, and some would be coming from the new waterfront bond.
So the, the, the total of eight point eight million, that, that would come from both bonds to make up that eight point eight? Or is it coming from some other sources as well? I know you have some outside funds, which I assume are grants and WOF.
It, it is actually coming from a, a variety of sources here. So we've got our, our bond, our WOF, uh, some of our coastal resource dredge money, uh, but predominantly the bond and the WOF for, uh, town funds.
Can we, can we say how much is coming from the upcoming eleven point four million, assuming town meeting passes that? How much would be coming from that for this project? Do we know? Can we get that number?
We can. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I know there was one that was two point six, but I think that may have been one phase of it.
I think that, if we could, if we could get that in advance of town meeting, I think that would be helpful for the voters at town meeting because they, and I've heard this, some folks see the, the number eleven point four, and it's, they sort of feel like it's a blank check. But if, if they understand that some of that is coming toward this and some other proj, all the various other projects that that bond is meant to cover, I think that would be a piece of information that would be very helpful to everyone.
Yeah, I'm happy to pull up the number. And in the waterfront bond article, there is a, a spreadsheet that calls out Ninety Bridge and the exact amount that would be coming out of the new bond.
Thank you.
Mike?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I, um, I think this is a good project. I, I, I'm mostly influenced by my more experienced, um, colleagues to the right here. But, um, and, and it's a, a, a pretty is not the right word, but I, I think it will be a, a real improvement of the look of that area as well. Um, it, I guess, the one question I would ask, I'm, I am generally a believer that investment in this kind of infrastructure, almost by definition, generates economic returns. Um, and, and I, I believe that will be true here. My question is whether you know or can imagine, or maybe even have an idea of how we might be able to quantify, uh, what the potential economic returns of, of this project, uh, might be.
It is possible. It's going to be difficult. I mean, there, there are some quantitative aspects. A lot of it is going to be the qualitative, quality of life, access to water, that's hard to put numbers on. Um, there's certainly the aspect of if we don't do anything, our existing upweller is not going to be sufficient. And we can talk about the, you know, cost incurred versus, uh, that kind of savings. Uh, we can maybe do a ratio of the commercial and recreational, um, but those are going to be very ballpark numbers.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not commissioning a project here. I'm, I'm just suggesting that if we, even as a kind of a broad brush, uh, affair, we, we could give some sense of the magnitude, of the potential magnitude of, of quantitative benefit that this might generate. That, that might be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
So you take the eight-eight of town funds invested, you know, say, next year or whatever, whenever the eight-eight, and then you discount the, 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 the value of the future cash flows generated from the Cohog industry and from the, uh, the, uh, oyster industry or whatever, mostly the Cohog industry, and then you get a present value of what the, what the, uh, the overall, the present value of the cash flows going forward are. And then you get a return. You can...
That would be, that would be exactly the kind of thing that I think would be helpful, yes.
Okay.
But you also have to take into consideration the economic value of, of the commercial activity, other commercial activity, and the recreational activity, and where that's weighing in on it too, because it's just not about the upweller, right?
Absolutely correct. It's, it's the access to, to the water, it's education, it's a quality of life deal too. But it, but the return is ultimately quantifiable. It is.
And, and I would just kind of add on to that is, I, I don't want to discount the value of the project just by only reporting on the most easily quantifiable value. Uh, the upweller is certainly going to show, you know, a return on investment over a period of time, but there's going to be a lot of things that don't have that discrete number that's going to be as easy to get. And the overall qualitative certainly has value for the town. So we, we can start, you know, working up, uh, uh, how this is worth it kind of discussion.
Jeff?
If I might, um, just in terms of opportunities for future grants, um, I looked at Ted and Jill, and you guys have done this a number of times, and Jason. Um, any, any, any thoughts about future opportunities with Seaport, et cetera? Any inkling what might be coming down the pike, knowing that the state is not flush as it was? Thanks.
Knock on every door.
I have spoken with the Seaport Council representative, and she suggested that we, uh, wait for the November, I think, is the date, for, you know, a specific upweller, uh, return and repurposing grant. Not that she's promising anything. We can never, you know, assume that we would or won't. But she said that would be the good timing for pursuing of a grant of that nature. Now, there are other grant opportunities out there. We have been somewhat diligent looking. They always seem to be close, but not good enough. Um, there are still some more rocks to turn over, and we will continue to do that.
Yeah, that sounds promising. Thanks, Ted. Thanks, good.
Yeah, and I also wanted to add, um, Ted and Renee have done a really great job of presenting the economic story for Ninety Bridge Street and other waterfront infrastructure projects. So that and public access and accessibility is really important to the economic council.
And not to be lost, because I believe there may be someone on board, uh, online, rather, um, the historical component. Bringing back the boathouse has really generated a lot of interest and satisfaction that we're actually potentially going to return the boathouse to its home.
Yeah, understood. Too bad we can't put the thirty-six five hundred in it too, anyway.
No, never say never. Um, well, I, I mean, I've been very supportive of this project. Um, this has been one of the projects that we've spent tremendous amount of time and effort and review and input on. Um, and I think, and I'm optimistic that the end result will be, uh, a very good benefit of the town, for, for the town. So, um, I guess for, for this perspective, I would, you know, thank you for your efforts tonight. I would definitely encourage periodic updates to the board. And if any, um, information that was asked for tonight could be provided to the board before town meeting, that would also be greatly appreciated. So, any final thoughts from the board? All right, oh, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have one last item on our agenda tonight. Uh, consider requests for additional pavement marking and signage to facilitate mobile food vending town office parking lots.
Good evening. Sean Aniele acting tonight as the licensing agent for the board. I'm here to request permission to add additional, um, pavement striping and signs to the town office parking lot to facilitate mobile food vending. Um, as the board is, is aware, we've had one year in 2022 where we actually had two vendors pull permits to operate in the town office lot. At the follow-up, um, meeting at the end of that season, I think we conveyed to you the difficulties that we had in saving those parking spaces, if you will, with the use of barricades or, um, traffic cones for the vendors who, although permitted, were not guaranteed to show up on any given day. Um, so there was, there was some challenge to that in saving spaces when they did not show up, and then not being able to save spaces when they did show up. So we had some challenges, um, in that aspect. We, we tried cones and barricades, which were easy for us to move, but were unfortunately also easy for members of the public and other vendors, um, in the area to move as well, to make spaces when a truck did not show. So we're, we're, um, had an internal discussion. We were thinking that, um, some additional crosshatching in, um, yellow would maybe help visually to set aside the four spaces that are needed, and the addition of signs, again, um, to, again, visually make it very clear that these spaces are reserved for permitted vehicles only, which would include town, um, staff who have permits to park there when the trucks are not in, 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 in the lot. Um, but would also make it clear that you need a permit to park there as the, as a mobile food vendor. So, um, one question we did have is the inclusion on the signs of a tow zone language. If we, um, want to at any time be able to hook a car out of there, the language has to be on the signs to give the police the authority to do that. We just didn't know if that's something that the board really wants the town to get into. Um, they certainly, the police could certainly try and track down the owners through registrations, try and contact them that way, rather than actually putting them on a hook and taking the car out. But that's entirely up to the board's decision.
On that note, the question is, if someone does park in that spot, you know, would, you know, would we consider a, a ticket, a fine?
Ticket would be the first, first line of defense, if you will.
Yep, but we'd have to put proper signage to make sure that it's clear that, that action could be taken upon that individual.
Correct.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with moving in this direction and giving it a try, as long as we have some kind of mechanism or teeth that, that if something does it, there's some kind of consequences. You know, just, you know, maybe settle, but, um, you know, I guess I don't, I don't approve taking action when the people know what, what they're going to do to me. I mean, there's no penalty for it. Like, I want them to understand if they're, if we're trying to deter someone from doing something, there is a penalty of some sort. And hopefully, maybe they have to park there a couple of times to, and finally get the message. But without a penalty, um, I don't want to take some hollow action. So those are just really my thoughts. Uh, Dean?
Is, is it a fifty-dollar fine for illegal parking?
I believe the parking fines just went up to a hundred.
So maybe, would that be on the sign?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Additional thoughts from the board?
Um, I'm, I'm fine with going with the delineated areas with the, with the, um, parking, um, fee, fine, versus the tow away for now. But I honestly, if that doesn't work, then, you know, we need to either look at whether, number one, mobile vending is working and downtown parking lots, or number two, if, um, if we need to take more stricter action to support that.
And, and that is something that the, um, staff did discuss, whether or not, at what point do we come back to you and say, you know what? This law just, it's just too difficult to manage. But we want to give it, since we've only had one season, um, we do have one vendor who has pulled the permit for, um, primarily the town office lot. vendor who has pulled the permit for primarily the town office lot, 4:00 to 5:00 PM starting, start time, and being at Harding's Beach during the day. So hopefully, maybe just with that timing alone, as staff is leaving, those spaces could be reserved for a shorter amount of time.
Mike?
I'm trying to understand. First of all, are these spaces ever available to the public?
Right now, these spaces are striped for town employee parking only.
Okay. So, so they're, they're available in, the same way as the spaces out directly in front of or next to?
That's how, that is how they're striped and signed, yes.
And is it logistically too difficult to, or just too complicated to somehow insist that the vendor, if they're not going to show up, either come and remove the cones or call and let us know that they're not going to be there? And then how does that relate with the signage, which presumably has hours on it that says you can't park here?
Sure. The, the last update that the board made to the regulations did include a clause that say they have to notify us if they're not going to show up. So that, and, and the vendor for this year is a local entity, so we have a very good relationship.
Okay. 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 I, thank you.
Okay. Dean?
Where are these particular four spaces?
They are on the backside of the parking lot to the left of the real estate office.
Okay.
And the transformer.
Behind the transformer.
Yeah, on that, that strip there.
Thank you. Okay. If anyone doesn't have any more questions, I'll entertain a motion. Dean?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I move the board approve additional pavement markings and insulation of parking by permit-only signs to delineate four spaces for mobile vendor parking in the town office lot.
Do I hear a second?
Are we adding in the parking, did you add in the parking fee?
That, that fee for ticket, for parking violations is already in.
I'll insert including the parking fine.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. One last motion of the evening, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. That was super quick. All those in favor, Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good night, everyone.